Right, wonderful. Well, with that then, um, thank you to the community, uh, to everyone who has joined us tonight. Uh, we will, uh, the call to order, the regular meeting of the Kansas City Public Schools Board of Directors of July twenty-second. Again, we're so glad to have you with us this evening. The secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Mencer?
Here.
Mr. Abarka?
Present.
Ms. Cortez?
Here.
Mr. Hogan?
Here.
Dr. Jones? Mr. Westerstrom?
All right, thank you.
Yes, Wolfsey is not here.
Yes, thank you. Um, it would be in order to receive a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
Sorry, Madam Chair, uh, Ms. Wolfsey just texted me and said that, um, she's on the line.
Oh, okay.
Perfect.
So, um, so we will count Ms. Wolfsey present, June.
Uh, she, yeah, she says that she's trying to talk and we can't hear her, so.
Now, yeah, I see a message too from her now. Um.
Uh, maybe, maybe Mr. Phillips can unmute her, but he says one minute, so.
Okay, great. All right, well, so then we have, um, six of our members then. And we'll watch for the arrival of Ms. Wolfsey. Hopefully, we're getting her in. June, do you have any idea whether she's made it in?
She's in.
All right, fantastic. All right, welcome, Ms. Wolfsey. Glad to have you with us. So it will be in order to receive a motion to approve the agenda.
It's been moved.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on the motion? Hearing none. This will be a roll call vote. The secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Mencer?
Yes.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Westerstrom?
Thank you. The agenda is approved. Uh, the first item on the agenda is, uh, public comment. The, we have three individuals who have indicated they wish to address the board this evening. Public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. I am looking at my list here, and I'm actually only seeing two names on this agenda, so are we actually down to two individuals now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the first individual is Mr. Ron Carter of Moore Square, so if we can help him to be able to make his comment here.
Yes, ma'am, I'm here, uh, and I, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Ron Carter, and I'm with the Metro Organization for Racial and Economic Equity, uh, known as Moore Square. I'm calling in this evening to discuss the issue of expulsions and suspensions of kindergarten through third grade that is of concern to the Moore Square Education Task Force. Uh, before I begin, let me preface this by saying, we understand that at this time, due to COVID- nineteen, the district has other priorities. Once circumstances surrounding COVID- nineteen are adequately addressed, attention should be given to this issue. Suspension of a child in kindergarten generally predicts another suspension of that child one to three years later. Some kindergarteners suspended from school struggle to reverse the negative effects in their academic life that the suspension may create. Our district is ninety percent non-white, and boys and African-American students are more likely to be suspended than girls and white students respectively. Sometimes behavioral issues can be reported by teachers who may hold implicit racial biases and not issue the same penalties to white students for similar behavior. These are findings from a study by the University of Michigan from September of twenty-eighteen. Uh, from another report titled "School Discipline or the Limitations Placed on Suspensions or Expulsions." Uh, this is a report dated August of twenty-eighteen, and it's a fifty-state and District of Columbia comparison of expulsion and suspension policies, uh, that was given by the Education Commission of the States. Summarizing this report, of the fifty states and District of Columbia, twelve states and the District of Columbia have no expulsions or suspension limitations, except in cases involving physical harm to the students or others. Connecticut, Maryland, and New Jersey covers kindergarten through second grade. California, Ohio, and Texas covers kindergarten through third grade. Arkansas, Louisiana, Michigan, Oklahoma, and Oregon covers kindergarten through fifth grade. Kentucky covers kindergarten through sixth grade, and the District of Columbia covers kindergarten through eighth grade. The states of Georgia and Virginia limit the number of days kindergarten through third graders can be suspended to five and three days respectively. Lastly, students cannot learn if they are not in the classroom, and when a young student misbehaves, the appropriate response should be to teach desired behavior, not punish the student. We think the district's focus should be one that sets our young students up for success rather than failure. Eliminating expulsions and suspensions for the vulnerable group of kindergarten through third grade may be the first step towards that goal. We are well aware of the challenges most schools used face this past school year and continue to face for the upcoming school year because of the COVID- nineteen crisis. We applaud and appreciate efforts of the board, the teachers, and all the employees of the district working to educate our children. But we do ask that you act swiftly and institute a policy to ban expulsions and suspensions for kindergarten through third grade, preferably for this year and going forward, except in cases of conduct on school grounds that is of a violent or sexual nature that endangers the students or other persons. A copy of this presentation, the links to the reference, uh, reports, and a letter concerning this issue that you should have received last month is included in your package. Well, and thank you for your time and your consideration. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carter. We appreciate you joining us. The next, uh, person who has, um, signed up for public comment is Mr. Tom Love. Mr. Love, are you with us tonight? Any, um?
Joe said that he is not with us this evening.
Okay, all right. So that concludes public comment. Just a reminder to the community who may be joining us tonight during this live stream or who may watch this, um, later, is that we do now, we have broadened our access to public comment, and people are allowed up until the time of the start of the business meeting at six-thirty PM to sign up for public comment. You can do that by sending an email to the Board Secretary, June Kolkmeier, at kcpublicschools.org. Information is available on the, um, KCPS website on the Board of Education section. So we have, we want your public comment, and we want to make that accessible to you, even as we do this work remotely as we currently are. The next item on the agenda is the Report of the District Advisory Council. For this report, the board recognizes Mr. Demonte Rochester.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening to prospective board members on the line tonight. Uh, the DAC is here, and we are currently in the process of working out, uh, where we educate our parents on TIF. This is related to the, is the letter that, uh, Dr. Bedell sent to the mayor's city council on the latest issue. So DAC took upon itself to kind of educate the, uh, parents and try to put together a support letter along with other parents in regard to the latest issue, I mean, latest letter that Dr. Bedell sent to the city council and the mayor. And then DAC wants to know, let the administration know that we are here to, uh, serve the district in any capacity that we can during this, during this time of, uh, pandemic, uh, during this pandemic, anywhere we can serve and help, let us know, we're here to help. That concludes our report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. I, I appreciate that, and, uh, thank you for joining us, um, this evening. The next item on the agenda is the Board of Directors' report. The presentation for this evening's, um, report will be delivered by Board Treasurer Manny Abarka.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and my colleagues on the board. Uh, forgive me as I veer to my right, so I can see the entire screens and my notes here. Um, unfortunately, uh, Ms. Linda Quinley, um, had to step out of our meeting today, but we have support from her office. Uh, so we'll run through this the best we can. Um, it, it, um, starting on page two here, good. Um, noting that the two funds that make up are operating both incidental and teacher, um, would, under a cash basis accounting system, be expected to be right at budget at this point. Uh, we are an accrual-based accounting practice, so things are a little different here. Uh, this comparison is still not actual, so if you look at one, as we continue, the, um, my apologies, I'm not following along on my end. If you look at the, um, one million nine hundred ninety-six, five eighty-nine, stand in the operating, the first column, um, you'll see that, um, we have continual activities still, um, for the next two weeks, so things will dramatically change there. Um, otherwise, things look, um, to be in good shape. Moving on to the next page of local revenues. Um, if you're looking at, um, a couple areas here, um, line fifty-one, eleven, and fifty-one, twelve were our current and delinquent local property tax revenue lines. Uh, in June, we reduced the delinquent property tax revenues in the budget and increased the current based on, uh, May data. You can see here that we are two-point-five million dollars over budget as of Ju-, uh, June thirtieth, uh, when combined current and delinquent property taxes. Um, you'll see, um, also here, the Proposition C line is the second largest line for our local revenues. Again, since we are in accrual base, the total revenue for this line is not yet collected, with May and June sales tax still to be collected. Uh, if we assume similar, uh, revenues in those two months to what we collected in June, uh, for April, we will be roughly six-hundred thousand dollars below budget on this line. Uh, this is exact assumption used in preparing the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one budget. Again, since this is, uh, a sales tax-based, uh, effect, you can anticipate COVID having, uh, resurging, um, effect on our budget in this way. Moving on to page four, under local continued. Um, in total, our current, our local revenue is ninety-nine point three percent of the June amended budget. Uh, we are to anticipate hitting total local budget as we close out the year end. Moving on to page five, county and state revenues. County revenues are well below budget largely due to the fact that we collect county stock insurance in August. Uh, we do anticipate hitting budget overall for the county revenues. Uh, moving to the next slide under state revenues, basic foundation formula. It's kind of weird on my screen. I don't know if there's anything we can do to change that, but, um, let's see, basic foundation formula is slightly below the negative budget, however, uh, will be considerable over budget as we close out the year end. Uh, this relates to the June withholdings announced by DESI, which will drive up the local pass-through to our charter schools. Um, so this is kind of a, a falsely inflated, um, number here as we estimate this line to end the fiscal year at roughly a negative eight-point-five million dollars. So as the money comes in and we reallocate it into the charter schools, this is our deficit, um, compared to the revenues that we're receiving. Um, if you look at the transportation line, transportation revenues, revenues are below budget, um, and we expect to meet the total on this line as we close out the year. Um, the ECSE revenues are well below budget, um, but are on reimbursement model. Due to the school shutdown, we expect that this to be under budget depending on, on final contract payments to our providers. Um, currently, we estimate being under budget on state revenues by one million to two million. Uh, currently, right, that could change if the governor decides to cut additional state revenues to us. Um, looking at our next slide of federal revenues. Medicaid, oh, sorry, this is just the local breakdown by source to show you, um, how our revenues flow into, um, the district and where the large line share is, right? It's our local, um, property taxes, and you can kind of break out where, um, other lines are. Uh, it was an important note actually to me, um, earlier today, is that, um, as some threaten politically to affect our budget, that the way that our budget is, uh, reimbursed, some of those lines occur, um, later on within the year, so that's something also to keep in mind. We can move on to the next slide here. So looking at, um, I think we skipped, did we skip federal revenues, I think, sorry? Uh, can we go back to, I think, this one? Yeah, one more. And this should be, so this might be a, a slide that's been a little bit botched here. So we should have one that was federal, um, operations or federal revenue. So my apologies for the slides being somewhat out of order here, but I'll, I'll read you the transitions, uh, anyways, just so you can have an ideal as to how our federal, um, is impacted. Um, so Medicaid revenues are over budget due to increased efforts in claiming the transportation and student services side. Um, okay, here we go. I think this should be kind of right. Um, many of these lines are reimbursement models with a final request and drawdown to occur as year-end expenses are finalized. Again, due to early school closures, we expect some portions of these funds to not be collected, um, although that will be offset by reduced expenditures and will likely roll over to twenty, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one budget timeframe. Um, child nutrition service revenues are down due to early school closures. Uh, in line fifty-four, forty-four, fifty-four, forty-nine, our regular year revenues, uh, we are four-point-three million below budget for the year. Um, while we have some reduced expenditures and food supplies, we will expect an operating loss uh, and child nutrition services for the fiscal year. Um, line fifty-four, eighty-one is the summer feeding line, uh, which is one-point-one million over budget due to the change to the reduced feeding standards and reimbursements, which also come with some increased cost of production. Um, so this is kind of the, the, the switch, um, as we started providing the summer, um, or the, the out-of-school, um, feeding programs and some of our summer feeding programs, some of these lines, uh, in terms of the, um, expenditures, uh, and revenues changed. So you'll see some of those transitions as lines fluctuate. Overall, overall, for our child nutrition lines, um, we are net three-point-two million below budget for all of the child nutrition services lines. As we look at total revenues line, um, should be still there, um, line missing, but, um, our revenues as of June thirtieth are at ninety-two-point-two-seven percent of budget, and this is, um, as we still close out the fiscal year, so there should, should be some, um, some fluctuations here um, that will be reflected, reflected in future, uh, treasurer reports. As we look at our expenditures now, I think we got a slide transition or two. There we go. Um, our salaries and benefits, a few more, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty payroll. Um, payrolls are yet to be run, uh, so we expect to be in bu-, at budget for the year in this area. Um, as we transition to the next slide, under purchase services, um, and supplies expenditures, many of these lines will be under budget due to, um, the school year ending relatively early, um, so that's why some of these lines are not complete. Um, and that's going to be same for both this slide, um, and the next two, I believe. So we should have expenditures by object. Perfect. Um, so, uh, we are sixty-six, sixty-six percent of total, um, of our overall expenditures by object goes towards salaries and benefits. Um, obviously, again, these are going to fluctuate as we close out the year. Um, and this is again indicating, sorry, I think our, our transitioning and my talking are, are happening at different paces, but this is just again showing you that some of our supplies are not, um, at budget, um, due to, um, not having the expenditures for not being in school. I think we can transition probably to the next one. Here we go. So this is our, our, I think we can go to the next one as well. Here we go. So this is going to show us, um, just again, that salaries and benefits are a line share of, of our expenditures, um, and that will continue to fluctuate. Some of our expenditures obviously changed. Uh, go ahead and go to the next one. So these are our investments, just as a reminder that our investments from the January tax receipts are invested to mature on pay dates carrying us to the next January. Um, so we're making these investments as, um, dollars that come with, would normally come federally, uh, state and locally at different times in large lump sums. We're able to maintain cash flow throughout these timeframes, and so that's why these investments are made. We can go ahead and move to the next slide. Next slide, please. Um, so again, just showing the full, uh, outbreak of our investments. Move on to the next one, please. So this is the breakdown, um, of our property tax collections up until this point. Um, as you can see, um, currently, we are ten, ten million dollars over budget in this line. Um, this was something that I had intended to ask, um, Linda, but I believe her department is, um, woefully able to answer this. Um, but I believe that there are still delinquents that are, delinquencies that are still out. Um, so this line may change some more. It is important to note that this is, um, an opportunity for us to cover some of the, uh, unintended expenses of COVID- nineteen, um, as we saw significant, um, ex-, revenue changes, um, that have caused major, um, costs that were unintended, um, and some, uh, opportunity for us not to go into our reserves, um, but further an opportunity to provide our kids with the best education we possibly can and keep our staff safe with, um, these extra dollars. So, uh, with that, Madam Chair, I will give it back over to you.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Are there any questions about that report from my colleagues? I would entertain those. I, I have a, I do have a question for, uh, or request of my colleague, Mr. Barka, for the next presentation, for the next time we have a presentation, which is, I think, for the, for our understanding and for the community's understanding, um, if, and I don't know if this is even practical or feasible, but we're going to have some different, we're going to obviously have some changes in some of those federal programs like child nutrition services. I'm not, I recognize that I'm not fully clear how that will operate in a different form of, um, education delivery. So if there are programs that you could pull out in your report next time that might look a little bit different from a, a funding and utilization standpoint, that would be helpful, I think.
Most definitely, and I think we'll, if I can ask our secretary to help, um, us track down that information as well from Ms. Quinley. We'll, we'll work together on that one. So good, good call as those continue to fluctuate.
I wrote it down. We'll provide that to you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Thompson. All right, um, the next item on the agenda is, let me get organized here. Uh, we will now go into, um, the superintendent's report, and so I want to recognize Dr. Mark Bedell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, to our board and community, uh, faculty and staff that's here today. We always provide a video highlight, um, during the actual workshop board meeting. And what we wanted to do, because we had to take a different approach to how we conducted commencement, uh, we wanted to provide every single one of our students with a rich opportunity to have as close of an experience to walking across that stage, um, as they would have had, had we not, uh, been hit with the pandemic. And so we were able to pull that off in small groups, practicing social distancing, and we worked with, uh, Pico or Tico Productions to put together what I think is going to be a phenomenal, uh, commencement experience for our students. But we had given all of our students opportunities to walk across the stage. Our valedictorians and salutatorians came in and spoke, and some of the speeches were very powerful. And so we wanted to provide you all with a highlight of, of some of those speeches. So I'll pass this over to Joe, so we can run the video.
We have shown time and time again that no matter the odds, no matter the obstacles, no matter the difficult times, we can preserve ourselves and outcome as diamonds when pressure is applied.
Our generation is filled with fighters, with winners, and with people who want to make a difference in this world. We will not be silenced. We will not be stopped, and most importantly, we will not give up, give up hope. Life might get harder after this, or it might get easier. But we as Generation C are part of the change, and I know that we will take the steps to make that change happen. We as Generation C will not go down without a fight.
Most of us have seen memes and jokes about us possibly not being able to graduate. Many people counted the class of twenty-twenty out, but we are here today.
But this graduation, my friends, is not an ending. It's a beginning. This graduation marks the beginning of our lives as young men and women who will change the world. This marks the beginning of our journeys to discover the best versions of ourselves. We will all take different paths. We will all make mistakes, like Mr. Meyer's finger tattoo or all of Ms. Coronado's Spiro Day outfits. But if we can bounce back and learn something from those mistakes, we can never truly fail.
My classmates, today is the first day of the rest of our lives, but so was yesterday, and so shall be tomorrow in each day after that. The decisions we make each day guide the course of our lives. To reach success, the definition of which is different for most of us, you must strive each day to move forward. We will not always succeed immediately, but that doesn't matter. A lack of success only becomes failure when you allow it to defeat you.
The pressure is coming, but pressure is good. Do not fear pressure. Without pressure, you procrastinate. Procrastination prevents you from doing well and moving forward in life and getting things done. Procrastination is wasting your own time. Stop procrastinating. Time is limited. The pressure pushes you up and pushes you forward to the next level. You won't ever fall under the pressure if you're focused. If you don't feel the pressure, then you'll get comfortable. You don't ever want to feel too comfortable because that means you're in the same spot for too long.
Everybody's struggles are different, but we, the class of twenty-twenty, never gave up on our hopes, our dreams, and ourselves because we are resilient. We are and we will be Viking nations. Thank you and congratulations, class of twenty-twenty.
Thank you to all of my peers for supporting each other and making the best of every moment, no matter the situation. Together, we made it this far, and all that we have learned from each other will stick with us for the rest of our lives. We learned about friendships, our true strengths and abilities, the types of people we want to have in our lives, and so much more. Though it may be a while before any of us are all together again, we had a wonderful four years, and we will cherish that forever. As Winnie the Pooh once said, "Promise me you'll remember. You are braver than you believe, stronger than you seem, and smarter than you think." We had a long road, but we finally made it. Congratulations, class of twenty-twenty.
You survived high school. Now it's time to live your life. Live for you. Live for your purpose. That's what's next. That's what you do in after high school. Finding your purpose is your next level.
All right, Madam Chair, board, um, it was a phenomenal.
Wait a minute, can we just all clap? Can we? Oh, my gosh. Amazing, amazing.
Uh, but it, it, it gets better because once you see the entire, uh, presentation pieced together, it's, it's a phenomenal, um, product of work that Tico Productions. I have to thank, uh, Jermaine, Dr. Jermaine Wilson for his work in making this happen. Kelly Waite, you're working.
Kelly Waite, you're working along with Jermaine. I challenged them to put this together and to make, make this as close as we could possibly make it to what we would do at UMKC. Our parents were extremely happy. People were upset at first because they felt that they were being robbed out of the experience. And what that tells me is that we do have the ability and we have the personnel to combat COVID-19. We're going to have to do it on a, on a bigger scale as we move forward with our planning. But we pulled that off in nearly a thousand students and, and, and we, and we did it. As I get ready to move to the next phase of the superintendent's report, this is the main reason why we have a number of folks logged in tonight to get an idea of where we are. And as you all know, there's, this has been tough. It's been very difficult to rest because I'm worried about our students and the well-being of our students. I'm worried about our faculty and staff members that have serious concerns around what the data is basically telling us. And what we also don't want to do is be an organization that commits any unnecessary or undue harm to students, right? We all are here to do our jobs, to educate students. But I also have said to people that 1A is doing what we have to do to educate students. 1B is to make sure that we're protecting our faculty and staff. Because if we don't have a healthy workforce, there's no way that we can properly educate students. And given what is presented to us with the current data, it did prompt for me to get in touch with our faculty and staff here in central office. And I had to tell, I had to tell them that there is no way at this point that I could recommend to our board and community that we bring people back into an environment, given the records that are currently being broken here in the Kansas City metro area. Before we do our presentation, and we have a very thorough presentation you all will receive tonight, I want to read this piece. It's a poem called "If." And I want, and the reason why I want to read it is because this is how I feel right now in the midst of all of this. And I think this is how many of us feel. And then we will pass it over to Dr. Shepherd, who will give you this presentation around what the district is looking to do. We also know that we will have an ask of our board that you, you can't take action tonight because it's not on the agenda. But we will ask if there's a way we can get together on Friday to give the notice, to do a 15-minute meeting to look at a delayed start, given the state of where we are right now in the metro area. So that we can ensure that we have everything ready to go. And there are a number of school districts right now that are, that have already made those decisions to start after Labor Day, given where they are with these cases. So let me read this real quick. "If you can keep your head when all about you are losing theirs and blaming it on you. If you can trust yourself when all men doubt you, but make allowance for their doubting too. If you can wait and not be tired by waiting, or being lied about, don't deal in lies. Or being hated, don't give way to hating. And yet, don't look too good, nor talk too wise. If you can dream and make your dreams and not make your dreams your master. If you can think and not make thoughts your aim. If you can meet with triumph and disaster and treat those two imposters just the same. If you can bear to hear the truth you've spoken, twisted by knaves to make a trap for fools. Or watch the things you gave your life to broken and stoop and build them up with worn-out twos. If you can make one heap of all your winnings and risk it on one turn of a pitch and toss and lose and start again at your beginnings and never breathe a word about your loss. If you can force your heart and nerve and sinew to serve your turn long after they are gone. And so hold on when there is nothing in you except the will which says to them, 'Hold on.'" "If you can talk with crowds and keep your virtue, or walk with kings, nor lose the common touch. If neither foes nor loving friends can hurt you, if all men can count with you, but none too much. If you can feel the unforgiven minute with sixty seconds worth of distance run, yours is the earth and everything that's in it. And which is more, you'll be a man, my son." I read that poem for a reason. That is because we are in a messed up world right now. And despite having to navigate through a world that's messed up, we still have goals, as admirable as they may be, that we have to accomplish. Also, this defines, in my opinion, things that a real leader will have to encounter. A leader that will not blame others for mistakes. A leader that will not defer responsibilities to others. A leader that will listen to both sides of an issue. A leader that will take risks and also accept losses. That's where I find us right now. There is no good answer for the situation that we're in, but here's what I can assure you. Everything that we do and everything that I'm committed to doing as superintendent is to ensure that we protect the faculty and staff and the students and the families that we serve. And if I, at any given point, feel that I don't have the ability to do that, there is no way that I will place people in harm's way. I will not do it. And so while I understand that there are going to be a number of people who will be upset, if I chose the option of 100% in person, I'm going to have 50% of people who are furious. If I chose 100%, 100% distance learning, I'm going to have people who are going to be upset. And if I chose hybrid, which is the option that I think is the most optimal at this point, I'm going to have 50% of people who are upset. But given the numbers right now, there is no way that I can choose anything in person as a recommendation. And when you see this presentation, we will provide context to you or for you as to why we have to pivot and we have to make a recommendation at this point that we move and begin the school year on a distance platform. But the other piece that I will say to you before I pass this over to Dr. Shepherd is that we will monitor numbers, and as numbers change, if we see a decrease, and that is in our presentation, in consultation with the health department and officials here, we will be prepared to pivot. And my ultimate goal as superintendent is to get our students back in our schools and to get our faculty and staff back in schools to be able to make contact working with our students, but to ensure that we're able to safely do so, practicing social distancing. So at this time, I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Shepherd to take us through the presentation.
Good evening, Dr. Bedell, Board Chair, Man sir, all board members, community, and staff. Tonight, I'm going to go over our recommendation. And as Dr. Bedell stated earlier, we'll be asking for you to take action within the next couple of days so that we can then begin working on the calendar as we proceed and move forward. This is a quote, and it's not quite as long, but I want us to look at it. "Historically, pandemics have forced humans to break with the past and imagine their world anew. This is one, this one is no different. It is a portal, a gateway between one world and the next. We can choose to walk through it, dragging the carcasses of our prejudice, hatred, our avarice, our databanks and our dead ideas, our dead rivers and smoky skies behind us. Or we can walk through lightly with little luggage, ready to imagine another world and ready to fight for it." The core values, as I present this to you, these are the core values that were used in order to develop this plan. And everything that we did, we always referred back to the core values. These core values were developed based on what our, our team and based on what our community determined to be core values and priorities for the district as we make this decision. The first is student learning will remain a priority and will not be compromised in either of our academic options. We have been planning this for months, and we have looked at all three options. And as we had our committees together, over 300 people, the main thing that we were ensuring was that no learning would be compromised in any of these cases. And we would do our very best to make sure that our students received the same instructions, the same level of instruction, and the same level of excellence, whether it be virtual, whether it be hybrid, or whether it be in person. And then number two, the safety of students and staff will be foundational in all key decisions. So just to provide a little bit of context, looking at some of the recent cases. This is an article that was recently published. Kansas City isn't a coronavirus hotspot yet, but new cases are on the rise as people begin to congregate. And what you see here is a chart that shows when we first closed back in March, all the way to now, and you see how the cases continue to increase. And then to provide further context, this, these are the zip codes that Kansas City Public Schools serves. And as you see here, the red, anything that's in red, that is a zip code that's more affect, more affected than any other zip code. And when you look at the gold dots on the left-hand side, it shows you all of our families and where they live. And so what you see here is that many of our communities are largely affected by this COVID. And then you look on the right-hand side, you see the zip codes that have been largely affected. And then in the middle, you see the crude cases per 100,000 of COVID. And what the average for the state of Missouri is somewhere around 500. And so anything that is above that would put that zip code in the red zone. And so as you see here, we have quite a few zip codes that are in the red zone, which means that they are, they're struggling and that they are in need of support. Then our student demographics here, and this is just providing more context around who we serve. The Project Smooth School Start Task Force was made up of people in a variety, from a variety of different departments. We had academics, school leadership, operations, communications, budget and finance, student support, virtual learning, human resources, and legal. We had all of these departments, and we had numerous people from each of the departments who were engaged in the development of this plan. Additionally, we had another committee together, a school continuity committee, which had over 300 people, where we had teachers, we had principals, we had central office staff, and we had, our union president was on one of them, and we had HR. We had everyone developing the rules and guidelines for us going back to school and what systems and protocols that we felt like were necessary in order for us to have safety in either event. Reopening priorities. So we, we made sure that we heard from a variety of people. We started out with the cabinet, the central office, and then we moved to the principals, and then we moved to our teaching staff. And we had 808 responses from those groups. What we saw with our teachers, and this is how we came up with our, the, the priorities. Student learning was a first priority for the majority of our teachers, and then safety was in second place. And we see that a lot of the other ones were important, but when we list them in the order of priority, the two main priorities that our teachers had were student learning and safety. And then when we look at our principals and our central office staff and our executive team, we see here that, again, student learning is a priority, and then student safety, student and adult safety is a priority. Again, the other ones were not less important. However, when we had to prioritize, the two things that received priority were student learning and student and adult safety. So our KCPS reopening plan recommendations are subject to change as they have, based on changing health and safety guidelines, updated guidance from DESI, updated guidance from state and/or local agencies, agreements with our labor unions, current and available resources. All of these are reasons why we may have to change. And anytime we get additional information, then we are able to make different decisions. But at this time, we're going to give you the best decisions that we have using the information that we presently have available. Our parents. So we interviewed parents and we surveyed parents. And we, we did it in a couple of different ways. We started out with just sending out surveys. When we didn't get a large enough response, then our principals were, were really great about getting their staff to work on calling our families and to make sure that they were able to participate in the survey. So when they called the families, we were able to get 5,574 responses. That is certainly not representative of the number of students because in some households, we saw that they had anywhere from two to five other students in that household. So this is the number of parents that we actually reached, but it is not representative of the number of students. We see here that in-person represents 41.1%. In-person and distance, the combination, which we call hybrid, 37.4%. And then we actually have 21.5% of our parents who are interested in a virtual platform. So when you look at this, seven, about 78.5% desire in-person or blended. And I do want to call to your attention, this was done in June. We have not done another survey in July. Then when we look at our KCPS results, how much do you approve or disapprove of each of the back-to-school options? What we see here is the in-person has the strongest amount that strongly approved. But then when you look at the number that disapproved, you also have a nice amount of parents who disapprove of that option. But then when you go over to the distance learning in-person combo, which we call hybrid, you see a nice amount that strongly approve or approve, and you see less that actually disapprove of that option. Then option three, which is the distance learning, a 100% remote, you see an even around the number that strongly or the percent that strongly approved and the percent that strongly disapproved. But I do want to bring to your attention that this survey was done the week of June 15. And then, how do our parents feel about students returning to school? We, we had a nice amount. If you look at the survey responses here, at this time, June of 2020, we had about 49.6% who felt really positive about their students returning and all the way to the ones who felt least positive about their students returning at 10.6%. Our instructional models. We have four instructional models that we're utilizing. We have 100% distance learning, which is just simply an extension of the classroom. And students are actually participating in the classroom, a regular classroom environment at home. We have hybrid, where students come on an AB schedule. They don't come every day of the week, but they come a couple of days a week. And then the other two days are done at home. Then we have 100% in-person, which is always our goal. And then we have the KCPS Virtual Academy. We've always had a virtual academy, which seems to have become a lot more popular in recent months. The difference, the difference between our virtual academy and our distance learning. When we look at our virtual academy, and this is a question that many of our parents have had, and I think many of our board members have also had. What is the difference between the virtual academy and then the distance learning, where students are actually learning from home as an extension of the classroom? Virtual academy has its educational continuity, so when children sign up for this, they have to stay in place for the entire semester. This is not one where when we do go back to school, they would come back. They would actually have to enroll in this because we will reallocate resources in order to serve those who are in the virtual academy. And so switching back and forth would not be financially feasible for us. And so the, the students would actually remain in the virtual academy. Location, continuity, you would, the, the students would actually be at home, and we know they'd be at home the whole semester. We have virtual teachers, open labs, a predictable format, and then there's flexible pacing here. open labs, a predictable format, and then there's flexible pacing here. And then the communication is, is different. There's weekly communication from the virtual teachers. With distance learning, though, the students are enrolled in their neighborhood school, and they're enrolled in classrooms with their neighborhood school teachers. Um, they, they would re-enter the building when it's safe. As we look at the options, as we look at the cycle, as to when we're going to return to schools, the students who are participating in distance learning as an extension of the school, they will actually return and re-enter buildings when we feel like it's safe. There is student socialization here because they will be with other students. Even virtually, there's a classroom, just like when they're in school, there is a classroom. And when they have virtual meetings, all of them will participate in those virtual meetings. There are tech tools, there's access to materials twenty-four seven, there are actual class meetings just as if they were at school, but those meetings actually happen when they're away. And then the communication is coming from the actual teacher who the children are assigned to. And then when we look at the KCPS Virtual Academy versus the distance learning, we look at the tools and the resources that are used. In K through five, we use Edge Annuity, and again, it is a self-paced online curriculum. And students are enrolled for the whole semester. Six through eight and nine through twelve will participate in Odyssey, where both of these are, uh, virtual academy, virtual learning programs. However, with distance learning, the students will use the adopted curriculum, the curriculum that we currently have in KCPS with the pacing guide with digital and print resources. And, and you were able to approve a couple of weeks ago, uh, some digital resources, digital and print resources for our secondary, seven through twelve students. So these students would actually be able to access those resources. And then the students are responsible for participation in the teacher lessons and completing assignments. So when you look at this, there's a difference between the self-paced and then there's the student responsibility and participation in the class. And so there, it's, there's just a difference between self-paced learning and then you actually being in a classroom and having learning as an extension of the classroom, um, at, at your home location. So this is our, this is our recommendation for this twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. We would like to recommend a late start where we start the Tuesday after Labor Day. And then we would, and once we see that the cases are beginning to decline, or then, and that would then kick us into phase one. Phase one is one hundred percent distance learning, and we've spoken about distance learning over the past couple of slides. That is an extension of the school at, in the classroom at home for students. So they are connected with a teacher, and that teacher does keep in contact with them, give them assignments, provide, um, ver, uh, distance learning instruction. And so then the question, the key question would be, has Kansas City seen a consistent decline in COVID cases for fourteen days? If the answer to that is yes, then we are ready to move into phase two. And our priority in phase two is bringing our pre-K through third grade students back to school in person with social distancing and all safety guidelines in place. And then we would phase in, uh, phase three, four through eight in a hybrid model, and then nine through twelve in a hybrid model. Those classes tend to be a lot larger because, um, we don't have the same class size guidelines for fourth through eighty-nine through twelve. But in order for us to have the social distancing guidelines, we would do a hybrid model where students come, and I will talk about that later in this presentation. And then after phase four, the question would be, has Kansas City seen a consistent decline in COVID cases for fourteen days? And then we would move into phase five, which is one hundred percent in person. That is our goal. And, and we are hoping that as we continue to wear masks in the community, that we will get to this point quicker. So what would drive a shift from one phase to the next? Data and science, and that's it. Uh, there, there's nothing subjective about it, but it's all about what does the data say and what does science tell us? And I think in a lot of cases, we're still learning more and more about COVID, but as we learn more and more about how it's contracted, who contracts it and who's, who transmits it and, and all of those things, then I think all of those things can help us inform the decisions that we make as we move from one phase to the next phase. Our blended learning model. Our blended learning model would have pre-K through three plus critical needs students attending school Monday through Friday, and our recommendation is that there is distance learning on Wednesdays, which does allow for our custodial staff to get in and thoroughly clean the schools and do the work that's needed so that our staff and everyone can remain safe and those facilities are sanitized. And so these students would actually come to the school and we would define critical needs. Um, we do have a definition of that when we look at some of our beginner, um, English language learners. We look at some of our high-minute special education students. And then we look at these pre-K through three students that we know are in a formidable stage of their education where they're learning how to read, learning the foundations of math. And so we believe that they need to be prioritized. Then we have pre-K Head Start, which has, which operates under, um, a different, uh, different guidelines. And they will operate on a five-day schedule with a ten to two ratio at school, while the other ten students participate in distance learning. And the guidelines that we've received is that we would add students as it is safe. Um, and those are the Head Start guidelines. And then grades four through twelve students would attend school two times per week. Um, and when we look at this, we would have a group A on Monday and Thursday and a group B on Tuesday and Friday. Again, distance learning would be Wednesday for everyone. But then on the other days that they are not in school, they would be participating in distance learning, which again is an extension of the classroom so that we can keep those class size numbers down and make sure that safety procedures and protocols are in place. Spring and summer distance learning. We want to make sure that we give assurances to the board and the community around the things that we learned from our spring and summer distance learning. And, you know, I won't go over the positives, but I will make sure that I focus on these opportunities because I think the opportunities are areas that we really needed to go back and refine so that we could ensure that as we move forward, we have, we've listened to our community, we've listened to our parents, and we made the necessary revisions so that we can move forward successfully. And one of the things that our parents told us was that one-to-one devices were necessary if we were going to do this successfully versus one per family. And so we have the necessary supplies in order to make sure that our students get one device per student. Grading, we want to make sure that our grading expectations are clear. Want to make sure that our kids understand that we will not be holding harmless again, that we will be providing grades based on mastery. Language needs for families that speak languages other than English will make sure that we have those things in place so that every family believes that they've been communicated with effectively. Parent professional development, this is a lot of what it is that we plan on doing. Making sure that we have robust parent communication and parent professional development on the technology applications and the meeting sites. More opportunities for teacher professional development on distance learning. We've done that. We've had, uh, all summer, we've rolled out the entire month of Ju- July. We've had, um, phases of in of a distance learning for our teachers so that they could make sure that they have the tools necessary to feel like they were able to move into a virtual slash distance learning environment. And right now, we have three hundred fifty teachers that are enrolled in some of our distance learning opportunities. So we're very excited about that. Keeping the virtual learning times consistent, that was some of the things that our parents asked for. Parents desiring more one-on-one time between the teacher. And so we are definitely looking at how do we do schedules so that teachers are able to provide more one-on-one between the teacher and the students. And then parents prefer that we use, students use one platform versus navigating through many. But what we felt like we needed to do in order to meet the needs here is make sure that our parents receive the proper professional development on the tools because it, we can't, we don't generally put our K through two students on Zoom or on Microsoft Teams. We use Seesaw. And so for them, for two students in the same household to be on different platforms, um, is not uncommon. However, we feel like what our opportunity is, is to make sure that the parents understand both platforms before we move forward. So we've asked for a two-week delay. We want to provide you with the benefits of a two-week delayed start. Students will receive their electronic devices. So we want time to first collect the six thousand five hundred electronic devices that we have out so that they can be re-imagined. And then we want to make sure that every student in every household receives an electronic device. Then we want teachers to be trained on the instructional models and the revised pacing guides. We actually have Teacher Institute on August tenth, eleventh, and twelfth. And a lot of what we plan on doing is making sure that our teachers understand the instructional models and our revised pacing guides. We had to revise those because in the fourth quarter, we did not introduce any new standards to our students. However, we will have to, uh, scaffold those, those standards in the first, second, and third quarter. So we've had to go back and rewrite our pacing guides. And so we want to make sure that our teachers understand those new pacing guides and those updated pacing guides. Secondary teachers will be trained on the use of their new instructional resource tools. They have actually, um, already had exposure to those, but we want to make sure they understand how to fully use those and how we'll roll those out in a manner that makes them effective for our students. Teachers will be trained on the virtual co-teaching model. We want to make sure that all of our teachers understand exactly, um, how co-teaching looks, whether that's English language learners or whether that's special ed. We want to make sure that there is a robust plan and that all of our teachers understand exactly what those expectations are with virtual co-teaching. Grading procedures and protocols need to be reviewed for all grade levels, and then teachers will receive updated class lists. Once our parents have the opportunity to sign up for the virtual academy, and we've had lots and lots of, uh, inquiries about the virtual academy. Once we see who we're pulling from the class list, then we'll be able to give our teachers updated class list. Um, and we will set a deadline as to when our parents can sign up for the virtual academy. And all of that has to take place so that we can have the accurate information before we begin school. And then ensuring that our math and reading interventionists understand their role in, in supporting our students. Uh, we will have to have our, our interventionist supporting K through six because we have a number of students who we know have not participated in any formal education within the last four to six months. And so we want to make sure that we have all the supports in place so that they can be successful moving forward. Then we want to have parent-teacher virtual orientation night. Uh, we want all of our schools to make sure that there is a virtual orientation night where the teacher is able to interact with the parents i- in every classroom so that they can cover attendance procedures, grading processes and protocols, virtual learning scheduling expectations, the role of the teacher, and we want to do this per grade level. So that every parent is, is understanding what will happen and how this will be different from what we did in the spring semester. Then we have, we're looking at having a parent university to cover student log, log on to devices, technology tools for pa, for class meetings, ways to ensure virtual learning success for your student. Preliminary testing and iReady for students. We use iReady as our universal screener. And iReady has created a platform to where we can actually test our students from home. And we want our parents to understand exactly how that testing will look and what they can do to support their students in that testing. So we can have accurate data to provide the supports to every student. Childcare supports and then instructional resources are all things that we'd like to cover in our parent university. How have we prepared our schools? School leadership teams participated in a virtual leadership institute, and then, and then many of you participated as well in that virtual leadership institute, uh, where all of our principals brought their leadership teams. And we, we talked about how we would proceed forward this school year, and one of the main things that we talked about and that we agreed upon was that no matter what the instructional option that was chosen, that we realized that we are responsible for teaching and learning, and we accept full responsibility for that. Then the teacher professional development, we've had phase one, phase two, and phase three. And currently we have phase three going on, and so many of our teachers, again, about three hundred fifty are enrolled right now um, in order to, um, continue to learn more about how to support and how to be better virtual slash distance learning teachers. Principals will meet with school staff in July to review and edit tentative plans for the school start. So each of them will get a whole day in July with their staff so that they can go over these things so that our teachers' level of anxiety, ne, anxiety can actually decrease, and they will be aware of, uh, what the expectations are. Now have, uh, a voice in creating these expectations at the school level. And then August tenth, eleventh, and twelfth, we have our virtual teacher institute where all of our teachers will participate and will have lots of different sessions to help guide them. And then they get an opportunity to choose which sessions that they want to attend. And the sessions that they generally choose are those that they feel like they need to in order to be prepared for the school year. Childcare support options. We are in conversation currently with Link and Boys and Girls Club of Greater Kansas City. We realize that we have students whose parents are essential workers, and so we are doing everything that we can to provide enough spaces so that we can have options for those parents. Uh, and so that those children can be in a place where they can be successful with their virtual learning and with their distance learning. And so, uh, we should have a plan solidified actually by the end of this week, beginning of next week, uh, with each of these entities, and we'll be meeting with principals on Thursday to look at some sites and some possible recommendations for sites so that we can have hubs that our parents can access. And then our Boys and Girls Club of Greater Kansas City stands ready to support us. And we've had several conversations with them, and we'll continue having conversations with the community because we believe that this is a community challenge, and so it requires the community coming together to provide the necessary support in order to make all of these plans successful. Will our students be able to participate in athletics? Currently, we are in conversation with Misha regarding specific rules that can be applied to our student athletes. Um, we are having conversations with Misha around a blended model for our athletes so that they can still participate in sports, and that blended model would be having a study lab at the school day for a, a small amount of time during the day. And then, um, the, the rest of the time, uh, they would actually be participating in the distance learning as well. And so more information on this is forthcoming, but we are looking at options so that we can ensure that our athletes still have the opportunity to participate in sports. Student support. We have given special attention to special ed students and our English language learners. Um, we look at the, our special education, some of our priorities. Students will have case managers to ensure that their IP goals are being adhered to. There will be regular and direct communication with the families. Our students in co-teaching classrooms will continue to have the support of co-teachers remotely, and we will continue training in those areas. Um, remote guidelines for co-teaching have been developed. We have some comprehensive guidelines for special ed that will provide, um, all of the, the su, support and the direction for our teachers. And then our students with high minutes are considered critical needs, and they will receive priority when we bring our students back face to face. Our English language learners, our families will have liaisons that provide support. The families have access to resources and technology. Want to make sure that all of our families understand what supports that they have and how to utilize the resources. Um, our English language learner teachers will provide language support classes through Seesaw and Google Classroom, and then they'll additionally provide co-teacher support within the classroom. We have an app that we use called Talking Point, and we have regular communications with our families in a hundred different languages. And we're really happy about it because we can send out communication, uh, in English, and it will translate to whatever language that a family needs, and then they can respond, and it will translate back to us in English so that we can have regular communication with all of our families. Remote guidelines for co-teaching have been developed. And then students who are in our, who are beginner English language learner students, and then students with limited or interrupted formal education are also considered critical needs, and they will receive priority when we bring our students back face to face. And so now, Dr. Collier will talk about human resources and the frequently asked questions and answers.
Good evening, everyone. Um, we know as we are navigating COVID nineteen and planning for a re-entry into our schools, um, there have been lots of questions, concerns, and anxieties. And so Human Resources has worked to, uh, develop, um, answers to questions that are frequently asked, things that people are concerned and, and worried about. For the sake of brevity, though, for this evening, I did not include every frequently asked question. However, those will be uh, disseminated on Friday and posted to our website, so all of our staff members can review and have questions answered. But for tonight, I have included four questions. Um, these are probably the ones that we hear most frequently. There's been lots of concerns around, will staff be required to wear, wear masks in the school and work sites? And the answer to that is yes, we are going to require all staff members to wear a mask in order to help mitigate um, the spread of, of COVID nineteen in our facilities. Uh, we do know, however, there are people, um, who may have, um, medical conditions and concerns related to wearing a mask. In that case, we're asking them to reach out to our employee relations staff, um, to have a, a conversation with them, an interactive conversation. Um, and then at that point, it will be determined what an appropriate accommodation is for that particular employee. Um, the next question that we've heard quite a bit is, um, concern about returning to the, it looks like the slide changed. Can we go? Can we go back? There we go. Okay, the second question is when we return to the school work site, I'm concerned about returning due to my medical condition. We've heard that quite a bit from employees. And so if if this is the case for an employee that they have a serious health condition, especially those who are cited by CDC as high risk, we are encouraging encouraging them to first consult their physician and then connect once again with our employee relations staff. And we've included included their names, contact information. At that point, that staff will engage in the ADA interactive process with those employees. And once again, an appropriate accommodation will be established for those employees in order to make sure that they are safe. Next slide, please. Thank you. This third question is dealing with someone who may who believes they may have been exposed to COVID-19 or they think they're exhibiting symptoms of COVID-19. So we have two scenarios here. If someone is, when when we are working remotely, we still have a response. We expect for them to notify their supervisor, also notify Human Resources. We want them to consult their professional healthcare provider. If they if they discover that they are not COVID-19 positive, then we expect for them to continue working remotely. However, in the unfortunate case that they have contracted COVID-19 under the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, they are eligible for up to 80 hours of emergency paid leave. And that is that is for all employees. And that's approximately two weeks or 10 working days that employees would not have to worry about using PTO or being concerned about how they will cover that leave time. If they are working on-site when that happens and they have these concerns, the only difference in the steps is that we would ask them to leave the work site, of course. And then also if they would need to remain home for 14 days to quarantine and then return with a doctor's note confirming that they are not positive. And once again, those employees as well are covered under the Family First Coronavirus Response Act. Next slide, please. This fourth question is regarding anxiety and worry. We know a lot of people have concerns and it's probably more common than not at this particular time. And so we want our employees to know that we do have some services available to them. And one of those is the Employee Assistance Program. We work with the Provider New Directions. And all of our employees are entitled to six free counseling sessions. And the great thing about that is is that they can share those counseling sessions with household family members. So it's not just for the employee, but there may be other family members who are dealing with anxiety and worries and concern. And they can use those those counseling sessions for those family members as well if they deem it necessary. The other great piece is that we have some in-house support as well. Dr. Woodley and the student support team, our trauma-sensitive clinicians, have have also made themselves available to provide counseling and support for our staff members. They have established a professional staff COVID care line where our employees can contact them. Also, one note I wanted to make is that not not only have they done that for our employees, but also for all of our schools. They've established COVID care lines for our students and families who would also like to have confidential counseling and support during this time. Thank you, and I think I'm passing it over to Mr. Lizelle Ofield at this time.
Lizelle, are you on mute? Can we hear? Does any, Lizelle?
If you will unmute.
Oh, okay, that's what I was wondering. All right, so we don't want to hold up, so let me let me do it. And if you guys can get him fixed up.
I think we got him. He'll just use my microphone. He's in my office.
Oh, okay. This presentation two times. I can do it too.
Okay.
All right. Good evening. Sorry about that. So as we prepare prepare our facilities to open that, we partnered with Acutech to conduct several air quality testing and water testing. And with those results and recommendations, we will plan accordingly. Next slide. Thank you. And currently, right now, we are in our normal summer cleaning process is underway. We have a completion date of August 1st. We planned our custodians to separate as they clean each of the classrooms. We've also installed hand sanitizing every classroom, every entrance points throughout our facilities.
Hey, Lizelle, do me a favor. Go back, go back to that previous screen. I did want you to talk about the system that we put in place around the request for PPE supplies and things of that nature. Can you share with our listeners what we've done in that area?
Yes. So with our PPEs, we looked and see what is the correct amount of PPEs that we need for our facilities to keep our students and staff safe. We have outlined face masks, face shields, sneeze guards that will be placed in the entrance way for our security and our secretaries to add a level of extra protection and safety for our staff. And we can go to the next slide. And along with the PPEs, we've sent out instructions to our building administrators so they can order their PPEs that is needed to service each of their classrooms. And as you can see the list here of the of the dedicated PPEs that we will have for our students and for our staff. And as we enter into the buildings, teachers and and students will be greeted with our digital temperature tablets that will check their temperatures. If their temperatures are below 100 degrees, they will be allowed access to the buildings. If we have a student or teacher that the temperature is above 100 degrees, we have dedicated I rooms in our schools. And these are just isolation rooms where we will transition them there. The nurse will do further testing with them and hold them there until we're able to get their parent or guardian to get there. And as we move out through the buildings, we'll see the signage, these COVID signage to stop the spread of COVID. Face coverings will be required in all of our facilities as we move about. And we will also have floor decals promoting six feet social distancing. And I'll send it over to Communications.
So we know this is a lot of information, right? This has been a wonderful, robust presentation for our community and for our internal stakeholders. And so really, our job at this point is to think about how we translate this to our community, to our families and to our staff in a really cohesive manner. So what you see here is our timeline for more formal release of information to our stakeholders. So right now, we're doing our meeting discussion, talking through our options and talking through what it will look like for school to reopen in August, September. We also want to finalize those recommendations. And then we really want to think about what communication looks like for our staff and for our families. This will be next week. We have been working on FAQ sheets, instructional model descriptions, student health guidelines, nutrition services guidelines, reopening plans, landing page on our website. All of these things have been very much in motion as we've been developing our plans for the reopening of school. We also are kind of a day of video series. What does it look like when we get all of our kids back in person in our schools? Lizelle just talked about our signage, all of our posters that are going to be up, giving kids and staff and families instructions on how to be in our schools. But if we can do a video to really help highlight that and show what our kids will will look like as we go back to school, it'll be really important for our families to view and have a level of comfort with how we're going to be back in person when it is safe to do so. One of the things that we're really excited about, that's going to be very much a value add to not only our community, but even communities beyond Kansas City, is that we have negotiated a 38th the Spot TV show. And as most of you probably know, 38th the Spot is with our KSHB affiliate that is really a regional program that reaches millions of families beyond even KCPS. But we're going to be launching our KCPS homeroom show on August the 3rd, starting with our graduation videos that you saw a glimpse of in our opening video here tonight. But we're going to be featuring our teachers, our curriculum coordinators, really going through lessons and having TV spots to support our families and our students from home. So we're really excited about this KCPS homeroom TV station for our families and beyond and look forward to launching that as we get to the next couple of weeks. And we're really fortunate, given this possible distance learning platform, that we will have one more platform to reach our families besides just that computer and hotspot-based platform. We want that TV access to be utilized by our families as well.
We are now open for questions.
All right. Thank you so much. I'm sure we'll have a lot. So I want to, I'm going to look to my colleagues to flag at me and I will open the mic up for your questions. Who is ready to go first?
I don't think you can see me, Ms. Manster. This is Nate.
Thank you. Yes.
So thank you, Dr. Vadel and team, Dr. Shepherd. I think that was a really, really good walkthrough. In fact, it answered a good chunk of my questions. But I do have some additional and I'll just ask maybe two and then let my colleagues kind of flow in and out. And then I'll come back around at the end if if I still have additional questions. So the the, I feel like there are two themes from a parent perspective, as well as what I hear just in general from the community and what I read in in most of media around the the biggest concerns that folks have. The first one being safety, the second one being the quality of online education and some of the challenges with regard to that. On the safety side, I'm really curious and I and I get sort of the district's position as it relates to, you know, how will we determine when we go back to in-person instruction? A lot of that will be guided by a consistent decline in the number of cases, your consultation with the Health Department, what they say. I do think, this is more of a comment than a question, I do think it would be interesting for the district to think through what they may feel is comfortable and and how you'll react if that doesn't necessarily align with the Health Department. So for example, if the Health Department says, you know, this number is declined by whatever over the next two weeks, then you can come back. That may not be something that that the team at KCPS is comfortable with. So I think in a future conversation, it'd be interesting to kind of get thoughts there. But on the the idea of, so once we come back, and I guess this would apply for those sort of critical need students right out of the gate, based on the blended model that we're talking about, is what does that look like if a teacher in that classroom or a student in that classroom has a positive test, COVID test, right? How do we react to that? That's sort of one, the most, I think, common and generic scenario. But additionally, what if it's a substitute teacher who's been in another school, whether it be inside KCPS or outside, they contract COVID-19? What do we then do to react to that?
Our HR department has worked with Nurse Grimes to come up with guidelines for this. And so Dr. Collier is here to answer that.
Okay, from the the staff side of things, if if we learn that someone has contracted COVID-19, we will, number one, we will notify the Health Department. That's been our practice all throughout this spring. We'll notify the Health Department. We'll also notify those employees who who have potentially been exposed as well. And unfortunately, those employees will be asked to quarantine for 14 days. They will have to leave the site. We won't be able to have them there if if that is the case. Another procedure is the areas where they've been, those areas would have to be closed off. And then after 24 hours, they would be sanitized. But those are the things that would happen from the HR side. And in addition, with the actual employee, we will consult with them and make sure they understand their rights under, once again, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, just making sure they understand their coverage as well as those employees who have potentially been exposed. Nurse Grimes wants to answer from the student's side of things.
Good evening, everyone. So on the student's side, it it falls in line a lot with the with the staff side. We, the, if a student has, it's found to be positive for COVID, we will close that classroom for cleaning. The nurse will perform contact tracing. So if they follow, if we follow our guidelines for social distancing and everything, the the impact will be minimal to to the school, you know, to the entire school. So we'll we'll start with that that contact tracing. Of course, the student will go home. Any siblings of that student will be sent home for quarantine also because of the the risk of exposure. And I think, I think that's, you know, pretty much it. It's a lot of the same as HR.
And and just another piece to add on, I think we've gotten a firmer definition around what is actual contact. How is that defined? And the last definition we had for that was within six feet of the person who was positive and for a duration of 15 minutes. So it wasn't what we originally thought where you're passing by somebody, so now you've been exposed. So Nurse Grimes is correct. There's a less of an impact on our staffing based on that particular definition that we've received from from health officials. Six feet distance and 15 minutes of duration in the proximity of the infected employee.
Gotcha. Okay. No, thank you. That's that's helpful. One one other question that I'll ask is around the quality of online education. So love the parent university. I think, you know, we saw that come out of North Kansas City High School a little while back as well. And so I I think that's good. But in terms of making sure that we're reaching the the highest number of parents possible, have we thought through, you know, how do we ensure that we have options across multiple days, across different times of day, including like evenings and weekends where you may have a parent who's working multiple jobs or a job during non-traditional business hours, et cetera?
I think one of the things that we learned during our summer program is that by recording a lot of the the teacher interactions, teachers and well, students were actually able to go and access those recordings at a later time when the parent got home or on the weekend. And so we do, we, our plan is to continue those recorded sessions. So every time the teacher provides that direct instruction, we will record that. But then in addition, in the spring semester, it was almost like we were thrown into a response. And we didn't have enough time to really think through. We were just building the plane as we were flying it. But now we've had a lot more time and we were able to troubleshoot during the summer with our virtual summer learning. And we actually learned a lot of things about the whole flexibility piece. And but then also having some flexibility, but then having a routine for kids and especially with younger kids. And so those are some of the things that we know we've got to go through and we've got to fix. But the main thing that I think we really need to fix is making sure that every kid has a device. The one per family just did not work. And we have many families in our district that have multiple children in the same household. So, you know, the teacher, if teacher A was having a class meeting at nine and teacher B at nine and teacher C at nine, then one, two of the students would not be able to access that teacher meeting. And so for us, it is about making sure that we have given out the hotspots and we have over 10,000 hotspots right now to provide for our community. And then that that every kid has a a device. And then that we are, we do our due diligence in making sure that our parents and that our students understand totally what the expectations are and how to access these expectations. And then our teachers have some flexibility around when this kid is available. And I think what our summer school teachers found with our older kids is many of them were available at at later times in the day. So they found themselves shifting their time schedule to, instead of, you know, eight in the morning until two in the afternoon, they would shift sometimes and be available from 12:00 in the afternoon until 6:00 in the evening. So I think those are the type of pivotal shifts that we're going to have to be prepared to make so that we can reach the maximum number of students.
Yeah, that, no, that's good. I think so as a point of clarity, to go back to sort of the parent side of of this. So if I'm a parent watching a recorded session and I have questions during that session, how do I engage with that resource to get my question answered?
How do you engage if you're a parent that's?
So let's say I'm a parent and and I'm going through a parent university and I'm getting some of the, you know, training that I need, but I'm not getting it in real time in a live environment because of my work schedule or what? but I'm not getting it in real time in a live environment because of my work schedule or whatever. So I'm watching a recorded session so I can get that. But now I have questions. How do I engage with that tool or that portal in a way that allows a teacher, a principal, et cetera, to follow back up and answer those questions that I might have?
Well, our IT department has a phone bank that can walk any, a teacher, any staff member or parent through any process. But then we also have a digital learning team that did a really great job of walking parents through some of these processes. So there are people that parents can contact in order to get the necessary one-on-one support that they need.
And what are the hours for that support?
Joe, is Joe on here? Joe, do we have hours for the support team?
Yeah, absolutely. So we have our current support hours set from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM every day with walk-in hours between 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM. That said, as we get closer to school starting, we open our help desk at 7:00 AM and we go until 5:00 PM. And then additionally, students and parents are now able to put in support tickets and leave voicemails and send emails that we can get back to them the next day. Another thing that we're going to be monitoring is how many calls we might miss during the nighttime, as we know that we're moving into a new learning model. So if we need to shift staff to start covering night shifts or longer shifts, we're going to be monitoring that and adjusting as needed.
Okay, thank you. I'll pause.
Can I jump us to the next? We've got multiple people in line and then we're going to circle back. How's that sound?
I was just about to suggest that.
Oh, thank you. I'm, because I'm getting messaged. I've eager people. Manny Abarka, I'm going to turn to you next, and then I'm going to need to read Jennifer Wolfsey's questions because she's got volume challenges. So when, after Manny, I'll go to Jennifer Wolfsey.
Yeah, I guess my question goes around the part-time staff who are dependent upon us being in session. And I just wanted to get some clarification around how we're going to ensure that those individuals are still maintained on payroll and we have, we're not, we're not disabling their ability to succeed in life in this current situation because our kids aren't, aren't in session.
That would be either Linda Quinley or that would be Jennifer.
Yeah, I don't think Linda's on the call. At this point, we have not made any, any changes or any decisions around changing the status for any of our employees. However, we will have to continue to watch to see what happens. And then we may, what we've talked about is possibly repurposing positions, giving people other responsibilities during this time. Because we know that if our students are home, there are some positions, part-time positions in particular, where they may not be able to, to fulfill the duties that they were actually hired for. So we will look for opportunities to repurpose what they're going to do. But over the long term, I think as a district, we have to really determine whether or not we'll be able to continue with that. Is it, will it be physically responsible for us to, to continue with that? But we've not made any firm decisions on moving forward with, with not keeping those employees. But once again, I think we're going to have to take a close look at that if we, if we are forced to continue on in the current status of working and teaching remotely.
And the most, the pain point with this, and people aren't going to want to hear this, but I'm just going to put it out there, is that enrollment drives everything. And so I don't want to be in a scenario, Mr. Abarka, where I have to start talking about furloughing because we don't have the ability to sustain a budget. But I will make it very clear, and I've said this to a lot of our central office employees, we have to take a look at where we are as a central office, and then we have to take a look at personnel, you know, outside of central office. And that's just the reality of, of what's happening right now. If we don't get additional resources, and one of the things that I wanted to share with everybody because I knew this question would come up, was that, just as, I want to just run you through this timeframe. June 1st, we lost 131 million. June 30th, we lost another 123 million. On July 7th, our governor and our commissioner went to DC and, and, and at that point, a demand was made that schools need to reopen. July 9th, our governor ended up giving money back to higher ed in the amount of 125 million and also for workforce development. And then on the 16th, our governor gives 15 million to tourism. So then we get our announcement on July 17th that DESI is going to reduce and restrict, and, and have restrictions that will all take place during the July payment. This is all factual in terms of what has occurred here over the last two months that has significantly impacted our budget. And if we don't get any infusion of additional money, it's, it's just not possible to sustain this.
So Dr. Bedell, actually, you kind of answered my next question, which was how does the inability of the CARES dollars to actually get to our districts to weave its way through the mechanism of state allocation, then pass it to the county, to the city, whatever, as well as the potential of future stimulus dollars that would otherwise come from the federal government or from the state? Are there any other broader impacts here? I mean, obviously, just give a treasurer's report. But I mean, there is opportunity here to solve some of these needs, right?
I mean, there's, I mean, it, it just depends. I mean, I don't, because you just don't know what you don't know. You don't know, like I said, with enrollment, that's a big issue. You don't know what decisions are being made right now in DC in terms of what supports are going to come in. We know that there was a, a, I guess would be deemed as a small amount of money, but it's a lot in my eyes that the governor, that the state issued to our county and in the districts haven't gotten any of that. Now, we are in conversation with the county for some type of support, but that's very difficult when you have 13 other districts that touch the boundaries. And then on top of that, you have another 20 charters that are within. So the money only can go so far. But we're, we're going to need some help. Any way you look at it, Mr. Abarka, from our, our federal level of issues, if we are to be in a situation where we are saying we don't want to have any harm occur to any of the 2,300-plus employees that we have in this system.
And one final question, Dr. Bedell, is it accurate that any stimulus dollars that we do receive in response to COVID, we are to share that money with our peers?
Correct.
System, correct. So this is, the allocation is not necessarily equitable as much as others as they get to apply for separate programs like PPP and we do not.
That's correct.
Ms. Manster, if I could just add one point, I'm not asking a question yet.
Sure, go ahead.
I do think it's very important that we clarify to our listeners tonight that the CARES Act money that we received in the spring was deployed very intentionally to address the very first point that Dr. Shepherd made about the, the feedback we got from our community, our parents and our students, which was that it was essential that we have one-to-one devices to support virtual learning and distance learning and that we, and, and as a result, the vast majority of those funds were used to get the district to current technology on a one-to-one basis, to make all of those hotspots available, to put new curriculum supports in place, virtual curriculum supports in place. And so, you know, if anybody points back and says, well, but, it's really important to remember that that money was very deliberately used to support our success in distance learning.
That's correct.
Ms. Cortez, you, you nailed it. And I, I will, I will, let me add on to, to what, what you've just said because I think there's another important piece that when you saw what Mr. Abarka presented in the, in the budget update, the monthly update, you saw that in terms of collections from the assessments last year that the district was somewhere around 10 million over what was, what was budgeted. But what people may not know, because we did approve a budget and we had to approve the budget to ensure that we didn't cause any further harm to our faculty and staff where we've had to spend into that to the tune of $6 million. And in order for us to be able to get through this school year, we're going to have to come back to this board with a, for a request of a contingency budget that may be to the tune of three to four million. So thank goodness, we did get that additional money because that would have, we would have been in a lot of trouble right now with the additional cuts that we're seeing at the state level because revenue is going to be short because everything did shut down. So this is, this is not a good situation at all for any of the educational institutions. And if we don't get the additional help, we, next year is not going to look any better.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate my colleague, Ms. Cortez, reminding every, bringing this all back to the fact that that's work that we, that's, those are business items and requests that we approved in the last 90 days, all designed to effectively utilize CARES Act funds. I'm going to go ahead and read Jennifer Wolfsey's. So the first statement she wanted me to say is, I want them to know how much I appreciate the fact that they tried, that they tried very hard to contact families for survey responses. That plan was well thought out, and I think she is grateful for that. Her questions are, I have a question about the supply and demand of teachers and substitutes. What are we doing to ensure we have enough to cover instruction for continuity's sake?
Okay, that would be me. We are, we have actually been in conversations with Kelly Services because we are forecasting that we're going to really need them this year. In, in the initial meeting with Kelly Services, I asked them to let me know how many of those subs would be KCPS subs, meaning they only work for our system. They would come and report and work in our buildings every day. Initially, that count was 47. But we know that we're going to need more than that. So we've actually started discussing with them possibly raising our daily rate. However, we learned after the fact that other districts are doing the same thing. So I'm hoping that it won't neutralize what we're trying to do. But the goal is to acquire at least 75 KCPS-designated long-term subs that would start the same as our staff and they would report every day, almost like they're employees. And so they would be guaranteed work every day and just be available in our buildings as we need them or if we need them to fill long-term sub positions. So we're hoping that, that we can fill all of our vacancies so we won't have to utilize that pool of subs for, for vacancies. But in the case that we need to, we will. So that's what we're doing for our long-term subs. But we've also talked about, and I don't know how popular this is, but even training some central office staff to be prepared to go out into buildings as well. And so we're going to provide training for some of our staff members here at central office. And if we need them, then, and us, I shouldn't say them, us, then we will also be deployed out into schools to fill classrooms. I mean, as Dr. Bedell said earlier, Dr. Shepherd said earlier, our primary goal here is to educate students and the main work is what happens in the schools and in the classroom. So if we have to go and do it, then that's what we'll do. But that's where we are currently with our, our subs.
I have one more question from Jennifer, and then we're going to go to Rita Cortez for additional questions and then to Marvia Jones, and then I will reach Mark Wasserstrom. So I'll try to get everybody in order here. Ms. Wolfsey asked, did administration consider any other hybrid alternatives? And if so, which ones? And why did you make this particular choice as your hybrid?
Yes, we did. We considered doing a staggered A group in the morning and B group in the afternoon, but we found that it would cost us an additional $15 million in transportation to double route every day. And so that, that option came off the table very quickly because we do want, we want safe options, but we also want financially feasible options. And so we had to take that one off the table. Then we also considered the AA/BB schedule to where there were some that would come two days and then another that was, we staggered and come another two days. However, we found that there would be too many days in between the group. So if one group comes on Monday and Tuesday and they don't come back again until the next Monday and Tuesday, we felt like there were too many days in between there for us to, for them to fall by the wayside for them to not be accessible. So we felt like having the staggered days so that we can make sure that we don't ever go more than three days without seeing our students was the best plan for Kansas City Public Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. So I think her, so I think you may have answered her question because she wanted further to know, did you consider A scheduled for one week and a B for the second week? But it sounds like your response regarding, you didn't want that much time to pass where the student was in front of the teacher.
Absolutely.
That was a priority. Okay. I would like to now turn to Rita. Trying to keep track of everyone. Yep.
Sorry, I'm to the point in my life where I have to have my glasses just to read my own handwriting. So first, I, I also want to join my colleagues in saying a big thank you to really all of the community that participated in giving feedback as we sought to make these plans, our faculty, our staff, our administration, our students and our families. It really, I think the plan that you've presented reflects, and I recognize that that feedback is now dated, but the note, the idea that we actively engaged our community in building this plan is, I think, very important. The, I, and I, and I would encourage our, I guess I'm going to, I'm not sure these are questions more than statements, so I apologize. I'll do them quickly. I think in, in our communications, we need to think about how we encourage our community, our, and, and that whole list, faculty, staff, administration, students and families, to think about prioritizing education in the choices that we each make around our engagements in the world. Because in order for us to get to phase two and phase three and phase four and phase five, to get to either blended or true in-person consistent education, we have to prioritize education as where we're going to use our risk budget, our engagement with the world where we have significant protections and set aside as much as we can safely and, and, and within our family's capacity, the, the, the fun things that create greater risk. Because what we've, what we have learned, what I've heard from some of the briefings that health professionals have been doing in the community is that the most typical introduction of COVID into classrooms in early childhood and in summer camps has been from adults. It's the adult who made some choices or engaged in some activities on their downtime that may have brought some important interpersonal engagement. But the price of that detracts from their ability to be actively engaged in education. And so what I would encourage us to think about is, is a, is a positive way we can communicate the importance of every single one of the choices that we and our families and our staff and faculty make so that we put all of our energy and our effort to the, to the extent we possibly can into getting our kids back in the classroom. It really does take every single one of us doing that. And so now I will get off my soapbox, but I think we need to think about a communication strategy, a persistent one, to help our families even communicate to their own kids why these, why the decisions have to prioritize education and set the bar high. I think the, the other thing that I would encourage you to, to, as the leadership, to think about is a comment that Ms. Wolfsey made in our last meeting around the going slow piece. It, as we start to phase in, as cases, as cases go down, God willing, we, we will have an opportunity, we may need to test some of our, our logistics. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily make, you know, I would, I would leave open for yourselves the possibility that you may need to phase in, you know, grade by grade or building by building or test out how things will work so that we ensure that as we bring back more and more of our kids and our faculty and our staff, we've created the best possible environment. So thank you, Ms. Manster.
You. Marvia, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. So thank you all for, again, I just want to echo what everyone said about really the extra effort that was taken to reach out to parents and make sure that their voices were heard in this and that they understand the conundrum that we're facing here. I think that's big. The conundrum that we're facing here. I think that's big. Um. I guess I, my main question at this point is just how um, how do you all feel as leadership about the. Community response and uh other organizations who could be partners? So I'm thinking about um parents for whom. The sort of enhanced blended or the enhanced virtual curricula will really be helpful. Um, and and all the enhancements that you all have made will be great. But then there are some who um still, for whatever reason. Would not have the capacity to be with their children um to sign them on a Zoom and 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 go into. Uh, Google Classroom and all of that. The children who would, they just won't engage. Um, or they are just gonna be dropped off at someone else's house to watch them. Um, while a parent has to work and that person that they're with is probably not gonna be able to engage them. Do you feel like um there have been organ- organizations in the area that have stepped up to assist? With the people who might fall through the gaps or do you feel like, where do you see the gaps are on with that?
Yes, Dr. Jones, I'm really glad that you asked that question because we have been working with community organizations. We've been working with Link. We had a really great meeting with them yesterday so that they could provide, we're looking at eight hubs around the city. That we would actually have so that parents, uh, students of parents who are essential workers. Or I mean, we'll start with the central workers, but we certainly won't limit it to essential workers, but they will receive priority. So we're looking at having eight hubs. For that. And then we're also working with Boys and Girls Club of Kansas City and they're looking at somewhere upwards of one thousand slots for us. And so we are working with the community in order to provide support for those students. And that was one of the main things that we wanted to ensure the community about. We did not want to do this without thinking about our first responders. Because many of us as educators are, we would be considered first responders. And so. And thinking about that and thinking about our teachers and thinking about um some of our families who, you know, parents may be nurses or parents may. Work in the health industry where they have to. We we are working very hard to provide support and we will have a solidified plan by mid next week.
And I additionally, we made contact with Truman Medical Center and. Part of the reason why Linda Quinley is not on, she was walking the building yesterday with personnel from Truman. Because we're looking at a potential partnership with them at the old KCNA facility. As a possible site for now um to provide some support for. Folks who are absolutely needed to to have to be into work. So we're 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 in conversation with a number of different groups trying to figure this out. That's a a big reason why we felt. That it was important to to kind of give that additional time through Labor Day to hopefully see if these numbers can can drop and decline some. Um, but also because of just some of this additional planning that. A number of school districts are having to pivot off of what many of them have already put, a lot of districts have put out their announcements on what they were doing and they've had to pivot. And so um. It that will help us with some of these other pieces such as the question you just raised, Dr. Jones.
Thank you. Um, I want to see if Mr. Wasserstrom has any questions that he would like to ask.
I do.
Wonderful.
Dr. Shepherd, I wanna be very careful because often words can be used to create confusion. Rather than clarity. We talk about online learning or computer courses. And sometimes we confuse entire study units. That are tape recorded and they have tests built in and you can have a a semester long course. That is all computerized. That's one type of online learning. And then as opposed to that, you can have a traditional classroom teacher. That does her classroom teaching, but she happens to use Zoom or some computer technology. To do her everyday classroom work that coincidentally is conveyed through a computer. Both can be called computer or distance learning, but in my mind, they're quite different. And one of the things that has excited me over the last year to year and a half was when I started studying. The set of three hundred different courses. The Missouri Department of Education has developed. Everything from psychology to geology to various foreign languages like. German, algebra, marketing, professional photography. They even have three entire courses on the history of the Holocaust of all things. And these are for credit. Available free to any student in the state of Missouri. That excites me in this and for some reason, uh. KCPS has believed that it can do a better job than the state of Missouri. So rather than using. The state program with its three hundred vetted programs, we have something. Last time I looked into the Kansas City miniature program, we had something like seventy. Different online courses, entire units of study. Now, what is being done, if anything, to tell students. In Kansas City Public Schools that they have the option at no cost to themselves. To get credit for a semester study in any subject they want.
I think Christie, Dr. Harrison will be able to actually answer that for you. I think there is, there's a whole lot of information. That that may not be known to the public. It may not be known even um in in a lot of uh scenarios and. And so I want Dr. Harrison to explain to you why we use the tool that we use and why it's cost effective to use what we use. So, Dr. Harrison, are you on?
Yes, good evening. We, we actually have access to all of the courses through the state of Missouri that you're referring to. Those are the mocap courses. We actually are a mocap provider ourselves. We provided mocap courses this summer through our summer school program. And we utilize two, two different mocap programs with our students. A third mocap program will be brought on with our elementary students this summer. Um, when we send our students out to these providers, though, our students typically do not do well. They receive instruction from um teachers who sometimes are not certified. They receive instructions from. Teachers who are not in the city, who do not live around them, do not work with them, do not make home visits to them. Do not make contact with them. Oftentimes, our families report that they get signed up for the program and then they. Um, they never hear from anyone again. To be quite honest with you, um, these vendors are nothing more than that. They are vendors. They're they are people who are companies who are looking for us to, or students to sign up and a way to make money. Our district is not a vendor. We are a school district. We are here to provide a free public education. So. We also are providing free classes for our students. We're not charging our students. We're not, we're not asking them for anything in return. And we work with them to make sure that all of the courses that we're providing them align with their. Line of study so that they can actually earn a high school diploma. Where these vendors that we work with, they don't have access to what their course of study looks like, what courses they need. They don't have counselors. They don't have the support systems. They don't have all the other things that we have as a school district. So when we sign these students up. We need to be very clear that while it may be free to a student, it is not free to our district. We pay for those courses as a district for every single course that we sign the student up for. So it is of my opinion that it would not be in our best interest ever to send our students. To a vendor or to some other company when we have all the resources right here in our city and in our district. That we can provide to our students, not only educationally, but also social, social, uh, to provide them the social emotional supports. The nutritional supports, all the things that we provide our students. So our our teachers within our virtual program go well beyond just providing instruction. Our teachers do home visits. Our teachers have provided um many academic services such as um sitting on. Student steps and providing them instruction just during this pandemic time. You know, our stu- our teachers sat on. On steps and provided instruction through the screen door to students. Um, our students deliver hotspots, I mean, our teachers deliver hotspots and laptops and things that our our vendors would not do. These vendors that provide instruction through mocap are aggressively targeting our families. When they do that, they are pulling ADA from our school district and giving it to companies. It's very important that we keep that within our school district for many reasons. But the most important is for the educational outcome of our students. And so it's of my belief and my opinion that we keep those students with us.
Dr. Harrison, thank you for sharing that again.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, and I, um, Mr. Rosterstrom, did you have an additional question?
No, I think I got the answer and the understanding and the rationale of why we're not promoting. The state program. Thank you.
We do promote the program. It is on our website. It is something that we promote within all of our our schools. Our high schools in particular, we have many students enrolled in the program and we do continue to hope to enroll many more students within the program. It's but our program, we will enroll students with us first before we will go to a vendor.
I would like to toss out for myself a couple of questions and then I I wanna allow anyone else to ask. And I know there's some answers that we may be able to get in Friday updates as well, Dr. Adele. So. This is a um question that I don't think needs to be answered at this moment, but um. I'll preface it with the comment that so much of what we're having to do now is requiring a lot of intensive. Training, very intensive training with people uh with, in a whole different way. So I'm thinking about. What is the, like, the the training and preparation for our school building nursing staffs? And I don't need to know that at this moment, but their role takes on a much larger role. When I think about. What my three children, when they were visiting school nurses for, you know. Scrap knees, headache, stomach ache. This is a whole different level of uh demand. And so I'd like to hear in some later report about. What is happening to fully prepare um those individuals? The um. I I think the, this is just a comment and then I'll get to the question. At the same level, the training of parents and preparation of parents is really key. I've been hearing from a lot of parents about. How will I know what school looks like? How will I know? I've chosen this school. I've chosen to go to Paseo Middle with my child. How will I know what Paseo Middle? Looks like when we start digitally? So um, I I think. Really deeply prepping parents. This is gonna challenge us. In a whole bunch of new ways about what we do. And one of my other colleagues made the comment. And I don't recall which of my colleagues say, said this, but. We're gonna have to use multiple opportunities and all, you know, the old days, we'd have, you know, one or two nights for orientation and you made it or you didn't make it. And this is gonna have to require some, a lot of additional work because. The success in this is really also dependent on parents feeling confident and students feeling confident. So now to my question, and I don't need to link the answer, is we have a lot of health partners with whom we have. MOUs with and agreements with a lot of nonprofit organizations. I, I believe we work regularly with Samuel Rogers Health Center. Um, we, I believe we may be working with Sulp Health Services. We do things with Truman Medical Center. We have um. Kind of healthcare navigation, I think, things with Jewish vocational services. Are we working with these various partners? So that they can help facilitate the kind of extra supports that families are gonna need related to either. Emerging healthcare issues or like in the case of JVS and. Some other groups that work with us with with immigrant families and new arrivals. Just the cultural shift we're making is complex for the, for mo- most of us as it is, but for people who may be new. And recent arrivals, the complexity is just magnified unbelievably.
So we have Allison Heil on here that can speak to the the new residents to um Kansas City. And then I heard you say something about social, emotional, and then working with different agencies. That will be Dr. Woodley and her team. And I know they have a robust plan. Um, is Dr. Woodley on here?
And and I wanted to say this to Ms. Mancer, um, you and Madam Chair, you could tell me how you want to do this. Um. I meant to say this right before Dr. Shepherd did her presentation. I actually want to come back to the board and do another presentation like this. Around these type of questions that you're asking because we just, we couldn't fit all of that in in this one presentation.
That's fine.
But that was my thought to come back, uh, give you an update on what we're doing in the student supports division around the partnerships. Well, what does the, where are we with the partnerships that Dr. Shepherd uh spoke to you all about? We also wanted to come back and give an update on our progress with our educational access. Uh, content and things of that nature. So, um, but we could provide the answer, but I just thought that it it may warrant us coming back. With a part two because it is so much.
And I'm, I can wait. I just wanted you to hear that those are the things that are sort of top of mind for me. So I can wait if if that's um. Best. I mean, I think just making sure that that we're ready for that kind of piece. So.
Absolutely.
I'm good with that. Um, colleagues, any other questions you want to get out tonight? I know we have some other business items to act on and it can.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Adele and team, Dr. Shepherd. Everybody I can see and not see, Christie Harrison, Allison Heil.
Team and uh how many other people did we have in 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 there? Dr. Shepherd working on this from the or throughout the organization? Is it three hundred? How many folks?
Yes, we had over three hundred people engaged in the school continuity plan. Um, and that would be teachers and some of them are probably on the line right now. And that would also be um some of the the um, the support staff and the central office staff and. We we had uh several committees and uh, Dr. Where is, is Dr. Jackson on here? Dr. Jackson actually led the work with the school continuity uh committees and did a fabulous job with that. And we have some really great plans. Dr. Jackson, you on here? How many people did you have on the committee?
We had over three and twenty five people engaged in this work with twenty five different committees. So uh, it was a very robust effort.
So I, kudos to everybody. I mean, it truly is a team effort to come together with this and it will get better. Um, as we continue to evolve over these next several weeks and um, and I and I'm very confident that it will.
Dr. Adele, can I ask one more question for Ms. Wolfsey? And she said. She feels it's important for her to ask the question tonight. Are we to assume that if the district brings students back with social distancing, are they planning on bringing back a class of twenty five to thirty students?
No, we 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 made it very clear that we would be on a hybrid model. We made that very clear in the presentation. There's no way. And and what we think that that, there's no way that we will put that many students in one class at at any given time. Because right now is, it's, it's still, it's not under control. I'm worried about additional things that may happen in November um with different strands of the flu. In conjunction with COVID nineteen and then who who knows? Um, and so we will operate on a hybrid model until we feel that that there there's. Substantial data that supports us being able to bring twenty five kids into a classroom at any given time.
Okay, so you'll have um, you'll have class limits and um, even for the A, A day, B day. That will give you the opportunity. You're also may, you're also operating on the assumption that some portion of families are going to opt for the virtual program.
Which will make, which would help alleviate. And that's the other piece. I believe we made, we made the comment. When we put our communication plans out, once we get all of our communication out to the community. Our families who opt into virtual, once you're in virtual, we need you to be in virtual through the semester and then you'll have an opportunity to opt. Back into the other option depending on how you feel and where where we are as a city as far as cases are concerned. But that is going to help alleviate um some of the pressure. That we will experience on um our class sizes. So that help would help us big time. And what that would do is hopefully keep us in a situation where in most cases. And what that would do is hopefully keep us in a situation where in most cases, we think that our classes shouldn't be, should be around 12 to 14 at, at max. Would, would that be accurate, Dr. Shepherd?
Yes, uh, we, we actually said 16 would be the absolute maximum. And so as we move forward and as we see the number of students, that was a part of the, the timeline. As we look at the number of students that are actually engaged in the virtual academy, then that would give us the information we need looking at each class because we would need to look at each school and each classroom and figure out how we can make this work. But we don't have any plans to send, uh, over 20 or over 16 kids into classrooms, um, at this time unless something significantly changes, which would be great. Um, and we have no COVID cases and then, and there are things that, and the cases are not escalating, um, each week.
Thank you. I know that we, I know we could probably all, we want to talk about this for hours and hours because there's so much, but it is, I agree that it's, we should pause here and ask all my colleagues to send questions in or information that you would like to hear additionally on, um, in a, um, next, uh, presentation. And we will work with the administration on scheduling that next presentation so that, um, we know that we'll, we'll have that opportunity within the month of August to, to have additional questions answered. So, Dr. Bedell, at this time, we have, um, some business items to take, uh, to, uh, discuss and act on. So I want to turn it back to you.
Sure, Madam Chair. The first item that we're asking the board to take action on is the Smart Dollar contract in the amount of $250,000. This is a digital financial education software tool for all district, uh, permanent full and part-time employees. This falls under our KCPS well-being program and is designed to help our employees with resources to work toward or maintain a thriving and health, healthy life. So this is just, um, the focus is around, um, making sure that we help the well-being of our, our employees in, on their physical, financial, purpose, social and community health. And so that's what this, uh, ask is as a part of, uh, the offerings that we provide to our faculty and staff in the organization.
Are there any questions for my colleagues about this item? Hearing no questions, it would be in order to receive a motion to approve the recommendation of superintendent schools to approve the Smart Dollar contract in the amount of $250,000. This is a five-year agreement.
Done, moved.
Second. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on the motion? Hearing none, the secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Manzer?
Yes.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Yes.
Wonderful. Uh, motion passes. Dr. Bedell, we have a second item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The second item is the City Year, uh, service agreement in the amount of $570,000. Um, we're asking the board to take action on that contract. And I, I think everybody's very familiar with the Impact City Year, um, has had working on our campuses over these last four years.
Are there any questions on this item, Ms. Cortez?
So, um, and this, with our current strategy that is going to be brought to the board for final approval in terms of kind of the phased-in approach, how do you anticipate that the City Year, um, participants will be engaged with our students?
Dr. Shepherd, do you want to answer that or do you want me to answer that?
Okay, what is that question?
The, the question is how would, how are the City Year core, core members going to be utilized?
Yes.
Given what we're going into.
So we, I had an email conversation today with Jess, um, one of the City Year, um, directors. And we have a robust plan for them as well. They provided a lot of support to our schools in the, in the spring semester. Um, they will still have caseloads and our caseloads are based on academics, the behavior and the attendance. And so what they will do is they will, um, when we look at the, the list, we've given every school a list of their students with data. And so we're asking our schools to tier those kids, tier one, tier two, tier three, and then a tier four for those students who would have been tier three, but they've had, uh, an enormous amount of time away from school. So now we feel like they're a little bit, they're more at need than they would normally be. So we're asking for our schools to, to get our City Year residents to begin working with those students when we don't hear from them online, when they're not, uh, when they're not turning in, turning in assignments, when they're not participating regularly. And so City Year actually has a really great plan to provide support to our schools. And, um, I, I can say that I'm satisfied with the level of support that they plan on providing and I can share that document with you in the Friday update if you'd like. Uh, but I can tell you that our schools, 92% of our, I know of our schools and our, um, our families actually felt supported during the, uh, the time we were away in the spring semester by the City Year residents. And so we will continue that. And then I think they've got some enhancements also. So I'll provide you with all of the information in the Friday update so that you can see what their responsibilities will be and our schools will make sure that they hold them accountable for those responsibilities.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And, um, I, my question was a little bit similar, but, um, so there is a, there is an effective tracking mechanism for their caseload and there's a data collection for that, correct? Okay.
Absolutely. Yes, we, um, we meet with them. We have a model now where we actually meet with, with City Year quarterly and we discuss data. And that data informs us about all of the students that are on the caseloads and where they are, what their attendance was before, what their attendance was after, what the behavior was before and after. And then even academically, where the grades were before and after. And that meeting happens every nine weeks. And so we will continue those meetings. They'll, you know, depending on what happens with COVID, they may be virtual, but we will continue to have those meetings because we do believe that all of our partners in anything that we're doing want to make sure that we're accountable for the results that, that we're supposed to get.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Um, so it would now, if there are no further questions, it would now be in order to receive a motion to approve the service agreement between KCPS and City Year, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $570,000.
Done, moved.
Again.
Second.
Is there any debate on the motion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote.
Ms. Manzer?
Yes.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Thank you. Uh, the motion passes. At this time, it would be in order to receive a motion to approve items on the consent agenda. And, um, for my colleagues who have their, um, we have, uh, consent items one through 26. So I would accept a motion.
Done, moved.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on the motion? Hearing none, the secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Manzer?
Yes.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Thank you. The consent agenda, uh, items are approved. This brings us to the conclusion of our agenda for this evening. So if there is no further objection, this meeting is adjourned. The next board meeting will be held on August 12th, 2020. Those who joined us tonight, we hope you will join us again on August 12th. Thank you very much and we will see you soon.